Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Aston Township Board of Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, June 15, 2022, to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Can you remain standing for a moment, please?
Everybody can say if they want. This is a little long.
Okay.
I have two folks I'd like to, that passed away, I'd like to recognize. First one, Madeline M. Horvath. I would like to take a moment to honor the memory of Madeline M. Horvath. Madeline Horvath of Aston Township passed away on May 30. At the time of her passing, she was 68. Madeline will be most remembered as the mother of Ryan and Michael Horvath, excuse me, both employed by the Aston Public Works Department, and sister of Planning Commission member Kathy Shortridge. She was also the aunt of Aston Police Officer Michael Jones. Also, I want to honor the memory of Thomas B. Luke. Mr. Luke of Aston Township passed away on May 29. At the time of his passing, Tommy was the young age of 97. He was a 70-year resident of Aston Township, having moved here in 1952 with his wife Marie. On his 17th birthday in 1942, Tom enlisted in the U.S. Navy and is a decorated veteran having served during World War II, earning the Good Conduct Medal, the Asiatic Pacific Philippine Liberation, and American Theater and Victory Medals. After serving in the Navy, Tom was a professional baseball player and played in the Red Sox, Detroit Tigers, and Philadelphia Athletics Minor League Organizations from 1946 to 1949. With his love of baseball, Mr. Luke was a founding member of the Aston Valley Baseball League in 1962 and was a president and the coach for 15 years. Later, in 2001, he was inducted into the Aston Sports Hall of Fame for Baseball and the Aston Valley Walk of Fame in 2012. He's also a member of the Ridley High School Hall of Fame for Baseball. Tommy was very active in the community, having served as Township Commissioner, but none knew that, serving as Township Commissioner in the 50s and 60s, and chaired the Police, Sewer, and Water Committees. He also helped renovate the structure that became the former Township building, this building here. His last job was with the County of Delaware, retiring in 1989. After that, Mr. Luke was highly active in the American Legion Post 926 in Green Ridge and served as president. Tommy was a longtime member of the Church of St. Joseph, serving as an usher and a volunteer and was a member of the Knights of Columbus. Mr. Luke was truly part of the greatest generation. So we can just have a little moment of silence for these folks. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, before we get started, I just want to mention, on Tuesday, June 7, 2022, prior to our scheduled Board of Commissioners work session meeting, the board entered into the executive session to discuss personnel matters. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 18, 2022.
Make a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'd like to move on to committee reports. Commissioner Dockerty, please.
I have before me the Treasuries Report for May 2022. Total cash in the general fund as of May 31, 2022 was $6,947,984. Other funds include the TD Bank escrow checking account with a balance of $379,603, the COVID Relief Fund account with a balance of $754,712, the TD Bank Capital Checking Account with a balance of $732,360. Total cash balance for the township as of May 31, 2022 was $12,917,863. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Penday-Grease?
Thank you, Commissioner Stugel. Public Works Director Activity Report from May 2022 to May 31, 2022. The following report highlights the main activity of Public Works Department, led by Director of Public Works Russ Powellmore. All metal was picked up throughout the township. All township vehicles and Aston PD vehicles were maintained and serviced. All streetlight issues were reported to Lenni Electric for replacement or repair. All township parks and properties have branches and trash removed by the Highway Department. All small engine repairs are completed in-house by our two mechanics. All 811 call sheets were reviewed and applicable streets were marked as per 811 guidelines. Pennell Manor, Gordenville, Indian Rock, Savage, and Concord Square Parks were all mulched using playground mulch. The inlet at 265 Beatrice Lane was repaired. Our Highway Department assisted in the landscaping and hardscaping work on the old schoolhouse. The headwall wash area in Crozerville Road near Bodley Road was eroding due to heavy rainfall. Modified stone, large boulders, and cement were used to sluice the area to prevent further erosion. Speedhumps lines were painted throughout the town. The team filled 123 potholes using 2.5 tons of coal patch asphalt. Community center buildings' exteriors were pressure washed. Beetress benches and swings were repaired at Ware Park. Redstone was added to the picnic bench area. Our sanitation department picked up 77.74 tons of recycling and 574.85 tons of residential waste. Please remember that the first full week is metal and appliance week. Bulk trash week no longer exists. Anything that can burn can be put out in the trash or trash at any time. Please have your trash at the curb by 6:00 a.m. on your designated trash day. Any questions or complaints, please contact Russ Powellmore, Director of Public Works, at 610-494-8005. Just one more thing. Starting June 20, it starts the second trash, get two trash pickups a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Penday-Grease. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you, President Stugel. This is the police report for incidents that occurred in May of 2022. Incident is handled 570, accident investigations 32, criminal investigations 21. Clearance Part I rate was 37%. Clearance rate for Part II crimes was 38%. And that concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the Building and Codes Report. The following is a report for the permits and licenses issued for the month of May 2022. We had a beginning balance of $179,253. Total income from building permits and general contractors' licenses, $17,356. Total electrical permits and licenses, $2,495. Total plumbing and heating licenses and permits, $3,292. Income from Board of Health licenses, $100. Income from certificates of occupancy, $3,100. Income from rental licenses, $750. Income from street openings, $335. And total revenue collected for the month, $27,428. The total for 2022 is $206,881 compared to May 2021 where it was $573,245. That's the end of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bowden, please.
I have two things. The first is, on the Board of Health, on Thursday, 9 June 9, the quarterly meeting of the Board of Health was held. Michelle Finelli, our Board of Health Inspector, informed us that there have been 32 inspections completed to date, which include our school cafeterias. She will be continuing to move through her list to have the rest completed by December 2022. There have been no recent Board of Health complaints for township establishments to date. I also have a report from the library. The Friends of the Library are going to be raffling off a 55-inch Sony Bravo television. Tickets may be purchased for $5 at the library service desk. The drawing will be held on the Aston Community Day. There will be a bingo to benefit the library Saturday, July 16, from 6 to 9. Doors open at 4:30. $25 admission. It's all cash prizes. The library's hosting kids program in the gym this summer again. There will be every Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. after school lets out. The programs start off on the 22nd. Both Grand Turlequist's, Tom Crowell. On the 29th, they will have magician Ed Schmidt. The library is now back to opening all hours, the hours of 2019. They're open from 10:00 in the morning to 8:00 p.m. Monday to Thursday, and 10:00 to 5:00 Friday and Saturday. You can now get your free library app on your phone. Search App Store for Delco Libraries to get it. The next thing I have is crossing guard openings. Aston Township is currently accepting applications for substitute crossing guards for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. Guards will be willing to work and able to work in all types of weather and in high-traffic areas. The starting salary is $15.33 per hour. Applications may be picked up at the Aston Township Police Department, One New Road, Aston, PA, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Current criminal background checks and child abuse clearances are required for all applicants. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner McGinn, anything?
There's no fire committee report this month.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need an approval of the Treasuries Report. I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I need a motion to approve the bills and payroll.
Second?
Second questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, I'd like to open up the floor to the public for agenda items only. If anybody has any questions, seeing none, I will move on to next item. I'd like to call on Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. I make a motion to place the meeting in sendai.
I have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, President Stugel. Tonight in your agenda is the application of Newman University to rezone the parcel of land known as 602A Convent Road, folio number 02-00-00618-00, from R1 Residential to Institutional. For terms of Section 609 of the municipality's planning code, public notice of tonight's hearing was advertised in the May 31 and June 7 editions of the Delaware County Daily Times. Advertisement also included notice of consideration of an ordinance amendment reflecting these changes. Proof of this advertisement will be included in the township's file. The property was also posted. Prior to tonight's hearing, the application was reviewed by the Aston Township Planning Commission, held on May 25, and the Delaware County Planning Commission, held on May 19, 2019. Both Commissions generally recommended the approval, but did make two recommendations. One, that conditional use approval be obtained to use the parcel for university use. And the second is that Newman consolidate the parcel with the abutting properties because it's an undersized lot, and once it gets rezoned to institutional, it then becomes undersized. But if it's combined with the adjacent properties, which are already university use, then it would satisfy that requirement. The applicant is represented tonight by Adam Matlowski. Mr. Matlowski, if you'd like to introduce yourself and your witness, which... Would you stand with the microphone?
Yeah.
Good evening, folks. As your solicitor has aptly said, we've asked if you would consider rezoning the property at 602A Convent Road. This is a property that was owned by the Sisters of St. Francis and has been acquired by Newman University. It is adjacent to some other properties that Newman has acquired in recent years and is adjacent to the campus itself. So rezoning this would not, you know, create an island or anything. This would be institutional, attached to other institutional. I have with, and by the way, the intended purpose for this particular property is going to be student housing, and we would have to submit an application for conditional use, which Newman intends to do once the property is rezoned. With me tonight's facilities, a man from Newman, Bill Leonard. And Bill, if you just briefly, you want to show him on the plan where it is and also what the... One of the suggestions had to do with some sidewalks, too. So Newman has already taken some steps to maybe show what some sidewalks would look like. And obviously, this would be part of the conditional use hearing, but just for your benefit tonight.
First, if Mr. Leonard can be sworn in, and then if you wouldn't mind standing in front of the microphone, only because it's being recorded.
Can you state your name and your position?
Good evening, Bill Leonard, Facilities Director of Newman University. And I have this awesome print that's been on my desk for about three years, rolled up in various sizes. But what we're proposing, I can bring it up so you can see it.
Well, why don't you do your presentation, and you pass it up here for us to look at?
So what we're proposing is, we have, as you know, it's upside down. You're good. Last year, the university purchased the Shad's house at 602 Convent Road. With the purchase of the convent, the university obtained 602A Convent Road, which currently houses Sisters. And even before my time, the university has owned 603 Convent Road, which we use for graduate assistants. The intent right now is to, the Sisters are going to be moving out later this month, middle of next month, and our intention is to put four graduate assistants in that house. The house is a four-bedroom home, second floor, first floor, and a basement. And we can easily attach, as you can see, this is the house in question right here. This is 602, this is the Shad's old house, and this is 603 Convent Road, which is currently, like I said, we have one administrator living in that home. And we can easily attach, you know, combine it to lots so that it fits the obligation of the township. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
All right, can we pass that amongst the commissioners?
So just so if I understood...
Try not to rip it.
I just have a couple of questions that I'll ask, and then I'll turn it over to the commissioners. So with respect to the conditional use approval, that will be forthcoming in the coming months as well? And then with respect to the, I guess it would be the reverse subdivision would take place also at some point in the future?
Yes, do I have to do paperwork for that also?
Yeah, I think we would probably do that in conjunction with the conditional use, do it at the same time.
Okay. And I think you answered my questions with respect to whether or not this zoning change would be compatible with the adjacent, in the neighborhood and with the adjacent properties?
Yes, both sides.
And will this change the parking or the use of public services in any way?
No.
And how about off-street parking?
We have plenty of off-street parking. Matter of fact, we're doing a, making a little bit of modification between the two garages to move trash cans, so there'll be more parking. We'll make a little roundabout, so the two driveways will connect.
Okay. All right, I think those are the questions I have.
Thank you. All right, so why don't we start down here, since you looked at the plans? Commissioner McGinn, have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple and a couple of points of clarification, because we were talking, I was multitasking, so I apologize if I'm going to make you repeat yourself. So the use is going to be for, intended for faculty, graduate students?
Graduate assistants, student housing.
Okay. So what is a graduate assistant?
Person who's going to school for, going to grad school.
Okay. The, in terms of the use with it changing, are these properties that will either stay or convert to the property tax rules? Are these taxable properties in their use?
There are currently, this particular property is currently taxable, but typically they would convert to tax exempt.
Tax exempt, even though it's from a real estate perspective?
Yeah, it would be real estate tax exempt, too.
Okay. Do you know what the loss would be for us from a property tax?
I do not know. I don't know the exact number. I don't know what the current taxes are for that property.
Okay, that would be good.
But we'd have to apply for that. That's not automatic.
Right. And that process, though, does that go through us, or does that go through the school district?
That actually goes through the county.
Through the county?
Through the Board of Assessment.
No, not me.
Okay.
There's an application that has to be made to the Board of Assessment.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to know, and understand what those impacts are. One thing, I know it's come up before when we first looked at this, and I know you weren't here at the time, but the sidewalk and curbing. So at this point, if that map's correct, any of the properties that you had highlighted, and I think it was that blue highlighter, are owned by the university? So there's two properties that aren't?
Sure.
And I know the university had said that they were looking in terms of a plan, and as a township, we had agreed to give more time in terms of that plan. But considering, you know, the various different uses in the housing and traffic back and forth, is that, what is the plan at this point from a sidewalk and curbing?
That would print right now. Our intention is to do it this summer.
Okay.
We need to have, continuing conversations with the two neighbors.
Okay.
To date, we have not gotten permission from them. So all we have to do is work around, do the sidewalk and the properties we own, and get that done this summer.
Okay. Are there, in terms of for Newman and the real estate holdings, are there, are there anything that zoned institutional would not be, would be tax exempt from a property's tax standpoint? Or does the use matter?
The use matters. It does have to be used for university purposes. It has to be used for, but housing is considered, typically is considered as part of that.
Okay.
I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't own property and rent it out for a business or something like that and have it be...
Okay. Do graduate assistants pay rent, or is that part of their compensation?
It's part of the compensation.
Okay. Are they employees, or what is, is a graduate assistant employee, contractor, or?
There are students who go to the university. I'm not sure if they have additional, I believe they have additional tasks, but I don't know what they are.
Yeah. Are they, I know in a lot of universities in the country, there's a push to unionize, to make them employees. I assume that's not the case at Newman?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Nancy.
Commissioner Higgins?
I have two questions. You indicated that the basement level is going to be a bedroom?
No, sir. Basement's just a basement. I have two bedrooms upstairs, two bedrooms on the first floor.
So the basement does not have a bedroom?
No, sir.
Okay. If you do decide at some point to do that, though, I don't even know if it has a basement. But if you do, you, I don't know where the access is. Is it to grade or what? But you have to have safe access from a basement bedroom.
Okay.
You know, so if the back, so if you ever decide to do that, you need to take that into consideration. The other thing is, you mentioned about adding to the part of the driveway and so forth. Do you know it's going to be more than 500 square feet?
I don't believe so, but I can step it off next week and figure that out and then do the proper paperwork.
The township engineer can probably attest to it, but if you're over 500 square feet, you need to do stormwater management. Is that correct? So just keep that in mind also when you decide to do that, you know?
Forty-nine and a half.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I have no questions at this time. Commissioner Berry?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Penday-Grease? Commissioner Dockerty? Okay. Megan, you have any questions? Mr. McConville, anything?
Conville?
Sorry about that.
Yes, I have one question. Just because a property may be considered tax exempt in the future and all the tax rules, will that property still be paying the trash fees to the township for the service that's provided?
It would have to.
Okay, I just want to make sure you understand that, because we'll send you a trash bill.
To pay sewer bills and all that.
Exactly. We'll send you a trash bill, because in the past, they have come back to us as non-paying. So I just want to make sure we get, you know, I don't know the rule, Beth, maybe you would know, or?
Do we have to use, if we do not use the...
Well, you're using, you're using, our, yeah, our trash men are picking up stuff, because I got a phone call the other day. They're picking up trash on there.
They are currently at the house. That is correct.
Yes.
But by August.
They won't be?
They will not.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Sorry about that. Do you have any questions? All right, that's, any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none? Yeah. You have to, unfortunately, okay. All right, conclude your presentation? Yes. Yes, it does. Okay, thank you.
That's all, thank you.
All right. All right, I call on Commissioner Higgins.
I make a motion to take the meeting out of sendai.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, line item A, under Old Business, consider a motion to approve the zoning change request to Newman University. Commissioner Dockerty?
I make a motion to approve the zoning change request of Newman University to change their zoning from an R1 district to an institutional district in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I'm gonna no.
I didn't hear that. Okay. All right, pull the board. Bill, you have to... Commissioner Dockerty?
Commissioner Penday-Grease? Commissioner Les Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Stugel?
Aye.
Commissioner Higgins?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowden? Commissioner McGinn?
No.
The vote passes five to two. Please note that for the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the comment with the vote, I just, in the future, as Newman encourage their development and they continue to move forward with plans to help them grow, but also think it's important to take into consideration the neighbors and the impact to Aston. So understanding comments in terms of property tax impacts, things like that, and I realize with trash, there isn't that. But if someone in the house calls 911, that impacts police, there are all things that neighbors have to pick up for, and things we talked about in the past, whether it's the sidewalk plan, and I'm glad to hear that might go forward, but things like that, making that a part of the presentation, and remember what we talked about and asked about, that that continues to get addressed.
All right, line item B, consider an ordinance amending Chapter 1256, Section 1256.02 of the Aston Township Zoning Ordinance. Commissioner Berry, please.
Thank you, President Stugel. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Ordinance Number 1026. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend Chapter 1256.02 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances and the zoning map of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances to rezone the property located at 602 Convent Road, folio number 02-00-00618-00, from R1 Low Density Residential to Institutional District. A legal description of the affected parcel set forth in this ordinance. Whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, hereby enact and ordain that Section 1, the Code of Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Title VI Zoning, Chapter 1256, Section 1256.02 zoning map is hereby amended by amending the zoning map so as to rezone the parcel of property located on 602A, described on the attached Exhibit A, from R1 Low Density to ID Institutional District. All that certain lot or piece of land situated in the Township of Aston, County of Delaware, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, located at 602A Convent Road, presently zoned R1 Low Density Residential, being tax folio number 02-00-00618-00, described in a legal description, which is attached here, too, made a part hereof and marked Exhibit A, is hereby zoned ID Institutional District. Section 2, the Township Engineer is hereby authorized to amend the Aston Township zoning map to carry out the intent and purpose of this amendment. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of this ordinance, ordinances inconsistent herewith are repealed to the extent of any consistency enacted and ordained this 15th day of June, 2022, attested to by Kelly A. Pippen, Township Secretary, James M. Stugel, President of the Board of Commissioners. And that's in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Pull the board, please.
Commissioner Dockerty? Commissioner Penday-Grease? Commissioner Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Stugel?
Aye.
Commissioner Higgins?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowden? Commissioner McGinn?
No.
For the record, five to two, motion passes.
Thank you. Under New Business, line item A, announce the 4th of July fireworks information. Commissioner Bowden?
The Aston Township Park and Recreation Committee, along with the Board of Commissioners, is pleased to announce that they will be hosting the 2022 Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks Display on Monday, July 4, behind Sun Valley High School. The fireworks display is scheduled to begin at dusk. We look forward to having all our wonderful residents come out and join the Aston community in celebrating the 4th of July and the beautiful fireworks display that comes along with it.
Thank you. Line item B, announce notice of intent to amend and... Line item B, announce notice of intent to amend an ordinance, 1018. Commissioner Berry, please.
Thank you, President Segal. I would like to announce the notice of intent to amend ordinance number 1018, which would add art studios as a permitted use under the Rock Hill Arts Overlay District.
Thank you. All right, moving on, escrow releases. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. Short one tonight. The following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Penoni Associates for the month of June. It's a summary of a number of them, $4,049.50 in the form of a motion.
I have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Sorelli Associates, Inc., for the month of June. Total is $1,633.50. Form of a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. All right, I'd like to open up the floor to the public. If anybody has anything, please come to the podium. We know who you are, Barry, you gotta state your name and address anyway.
Barry Pinkowitz, 3155 Richard Road. I just have a, a public announcement. The Chester Creek Trail, Phase 2, is on the agenda, am I too far away? Is on the agenda for the Aston Township Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, in the Township Meeting Room. That'll be at Two New Road in Aston. There will be a public display outside the meeting room, set up for, set up at 6:00 p.m. The meeting, which will start at 7:00 p.m., has the county on the agenda, and Nate McCulloch from the Wilson Consulting Group will present an overview and the status report of Phase 2. This is another opportunity for the public, for public comment. Although the county did get some feedback last fall from after the survey was distributed at and after the Friends Annual Meeting, probably the most notable, noticeable update is on the plans for the, the Dutton Mill Trail Crossing Design. A public survey with some questions, like the one from last fall, will be provided at the public display. Please join us if you can and share the news. Do you have any questions on it?
Anybody? Questions?
Barry, what was the date again? I was too busy running my house.
It's on the 22nd.
22nd of, of June?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then the meeting is at 7:00 o'clock.
At the new township building.
At the new road.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the effort and the hard work you put into that project.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you.
Anybody else?
His name's Nick Penza.
Nick Penza, 30 Morgan Road. Who did you hire for the fireworks display? Have they been vetted?
Stormfire Corporation. Please remember your...